I'd like to call the Delaware County Commissioners Meeting Order. It is Monday, January 3rd. The time is 9:01. If everybody could please stand for the pledge.
You know it. Play the allegiance. To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Craig Craft, could you call the roll, please?
Mr. Henry.
Here.
Ms. Reagan.
President.
Mr. King.
Here.
Mr. Brooke.
Here.
Next, we'll go to our reorganization of the commissioners. John, do you want to go ahead and take this?
Sure. At the first meeting of every year, the Board of Commissioners is to reorganize according to the statutes. That's the election of officers, president, vice president. So, the office of president is open, and I'll open it up for nominations for the position of president of the Board of Commissioners.
I nominate Commissioner Sherry Reagan for president.
I'll second.
Any other nominations?
Make a motion with closed nominations.
Second.
All in favor of, Steve, got to call the roll for that. I'm sorry, got to have roll call votes on all this stuff now.
Mr. Henry.
Yes.
Ms. Reagan.
Yes.
Mr. King.
Yes.
By virtue of the fact that there are no other nominees, Ms. Reagan is now the president of the Board of Commissioners, and it'll be up to her to conduct it as to the vice president.
Thank you, James.
Welcome.
My lord. Nomination for vice president, please.
Make a motion nominate Shannon Henry for vice president.
Second that.
I need Steve to call the roll.
Steve, please call the roll.
Mr. King.
Yes.
Mr. Henry.
Yes.
Ms. Reagan.
Yes. Congratulations.
Congratulations. Yes, thank you.
Thank you for the honor and welcome again. I'd like to pause for a few seconds as we start the new year and to remember what we have to be thankful for and whatever you would like to think for just to pause to reflect where we are today. So now we have appointments for the 2022, and we have a list. Mr. Brooke, would you like to read the list, please?
Yes, I would. These are the annual appointments. Commissioners Executive Assistant Jenny Honeycutt, County Attorney John Brooke, County Highway Engineering and Projects Administrator Angela Moyer, County Emergency Medical Services Mike Ashley, County Emergency Communications Center Director Bernard Fred Cummings, Emergency Management Agency Director John Cuttino, County Human Resource Director Pam McCannan, County Facilities Manager Steve Foster, Drainage Board Attorney Brandon Murphy, Veterans Affairs Office Manager Tommy Goll, Waits and Measure Director Jeff Brandon, and the Commissioners' Appointment to the County Finance Committee Jenny Honeycutt.
Would you like to?
I make a motion we approve the annual appointments.
I'll second it.
Roll call.
Mr. Henry.
Yes.
Mr. King.
Yes.
Ms. Reagan.
Yes.
All right, now these are the appointments for a specific term. The County Alcohol Tobacco and Board, Alcohol Tobacco Board, one year, Tom Simpson. Community Corrections Board will be Jody Cole, Kim Dowling, Jeff Hansard, Lindsay Wilmes, Doris Grandis Taylor, Sherry Reagan, Amanda Dennick, and Carol Ammon. County Revitalization Economic Development Commission, or CREED District, Dan Allen, James King, Angie Moyer, Jeff Rodifer, Doug White. County Convention and Tourism Board, Victor Whitehead, then there's a vacancy. Fairgrounds Board, Lennon Nicola, Julie Eskew, Mark Pitzer, these are for three-year terms, Jeff Smoot. ICAP would be Sherry Reagan and Mike Downham. Plan Commission, Shannon Henry. Boarding of Zoning Appeals, Leslie Mathewsen and Mike Jones. And those, the Board of Zoning Appeals are for four years. Redevelopment Commission is one year, James King, Angie Moyer, Kerry Wagerly, Bryce Conyers. John Adams, the Delaware County Community School Board Representative. One year for the Stormwater Board, James King, Sherry Reagan, Shannon Henry, Tom Borchers. And then the Drainage Board for one year, Shannon Henry, Jamie Soboda, John Landers, Bill Whitehead, Richard McIntyre.
Thank you, John. Up under Convention and Tourism, I believe Marta Moody's name was listed for a one-year term.
Oh, yeah, I don't know. That should be out of there.
Okay, is that?
I skipped over that one because I knew that was an error.
Okay, thank you. And we have some other boards that might be appointed later, but today.
I make a motion we approve the list provided today.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Mr. King.
Yes.
Mr. Henry.
Yes.
Ms. Reagan.
Yes. And we think all these members are volunteering on these very vital boards that we have to end approval amendments December 20th Commissioners Meeting and the 17th Special Meeting.
Make a motion to approve.
Chair.
Both sets.
Yep, both sets.
I'll second that.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Henry.
Yes.
Mr. King.
Yes.
Ms. Reagan.
Yes, thank you. Now, under contracts and agreement, the kiosk automatic is Jeff here, please, to explain. I believe we've been given a copy of it.
Mm-hmm.
And.
Got a copy and it was emailed to us.
There he is.
Morning Commissioners, happy New Years to you all.
Thank you.
Congratulations to the new president, vice president, and to Commissioners Henry and King for your retirements. Look forward to working with you all into 2022 for the betterment of our community.
You want to explain a little bit to the public what we're?
Yes, the contract I'm seeking approval for today is with Precision Kiosk Technologies. It's for an automated checking-in system for probation offenders that we're going to install in the public access area of the new Justice Center. Essentially, it'll allow our low-risk probationers to come in, do automated check-in process. It's biometric, so they have to check in with their fingerprint, takes a picture of them. There's a series of questions we ask that are asked of them, they have to provide answers for. Basically, there's a lot of research behind this, but for low-risk offenders, if you over-supervise them, it can lead them to become higher-risk individuals in the community, which we want to avoid. Also, as the pandemic showed us, it's important to have a way to maintain contact and supervision of offenders even when we're dealing with building closures and a lot of things we've never had to deal with before. So, this unit will allow us to see those folks and monitor them without having to make necessarily direct face-to-face contact.
Yeah, keep them accountable and?
It is also, it'd also be a sanction for other, you know, if we deal with violations of the rules and so forth, we can increase their amount of times they have to come in and check in and so forth. So, there's a lot of, it's a force multiplier for the probation department, so instead of looking to get more employees, we can utilize automated technological solutions to kind of fulfill that role.
How are you paying for it?
We have a grant for a year's worth of funding for it. We, through the opioid grant, that we were, it was appropriated by council towards the end of 2021. So, the funds have already been appropriated. The wiring's been installed for the unit, and upon approval of this contract, we can begin the process of getting it installed.
And being 24/7, that's just going to be a big help around here.
It is, and you know, we have probationers that work third shift or work second shift work, and you know, it makes it more convenient for some of those folks as well to come in and report early in the morning, late at night, and so forth, so it's another way just to keep people accountable.
And John, you've had a chance to look over?
I have. I don't see anything that's an issue with this particular contract.
Did I read that it was $16,000 and?
Per year, $16,000, some change per year.
And we're going to be asked to put $10,000 in?
At this time, I'm not, don't require any additional appropriation or funding from council or from the county. We, like I said, we've got grant funding to pay for it for the first year.
Talking about from Emily Anderson and the courts.
What's your pleasure?
I'll make a motion we approve the contract.
I'll second it.
Roll call.
Mr. King.
Yes.
Mr. Henry.
Yes.
Ms. Reagan.
Yes, thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you Commissioners, please come check it out once it's installed, but later this month.
Thank you so much. Okay, roll to resolutions, resolution number 2022-001. For the Plan Commission, is Marta here?
Yes.
Yes, Marta.
Marta Moody, I'm the Executive Director for the Delaware Muncy Metropolitan Plan Commission. And as you know, we have been working on our new comprehensive plan, which is like the master plan that's used in planning and zoning for decision-making and policy guidance. And we, the document and the project has been labeled Together DM Delaware Muncy. And we are here today to present the final plan to the Commissioners for their adoption. And the way this works is, for a comprehensive plan, the Plan Commission, like I said, we've been working on this since January of last year, and the Plan Commission had the final public hearing at a December 9th meeting, and they then approved and favorably recommended the Together DM document, and that is what is in front of you this morning. And I do have with me this morning Thomas Eddington with CZB. CZB is our consultant on this project, and he has a short PowerPoint to present to you that highlights some of the main components of the Together DM plan, and I will turn it over. I think in a previous presentation, you know that we've had a whole lot of public input, and that has all led us to the point of preparing the final document, so I'm going to turn it over to Thomas, and he can go through the PowerPoint for the highlights of the Together DM plan.
Thank you.
Good morning Commissioners, happy New Year. It's nice to be with you all again. I know you guys have a busy morning, so I'll keep this pretty quick. We've got just a few slides, as Marta noted, that outline kind of the process that we went through with the Delaware Muncy community and how we got to where we are. And so, let me see if I can do this.
If somebody would turn the lights off, I think they would show up better.
Uh-oh.
Somebody write the back.
You just scroll it.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. I don't expect you to read this, but as Marta noted, we did have a significant amount of public outreach for the Delaware Muncy plan, and we had a steering committee made up of 17 members from both the cities in the county, as well as Muncy, as well as those in the unincorporated areas. They were basically the entity that we kind of coordinated with basically on an every other month schedule. We also did a number of kitchen-table conversations, an outreach opportunity where we kind of get into deeper conversations. We worked with the steering committee to kind of spread their tentacles out in the community and discuss scenarios and issues, et cetera, that were relevant to the plan. There were a couple of online surveys. We received over 600 responses, as well as input from a few public open houses. And so, we were happy with the turnout and the ability to reach out to the community. The input was pretty impressive. I'll walk through the vision for the plan. As I said, we've got about 10 or so slides here. Keep in mind that a comprehensive plan is a non-binding document. It's not a zoning document that is binding, it is a non-binding document, so you follow it in as much as you're willing to commit to it. So, the vision for the comprehensive plan was kind of laid out in some fundamental core values that were outlined here. Legacy values, what the community told us is that we have a legacy of being entrepreneurial and gritty, and they said, those are good. We want to keep those as kind of this, kind of fundamental value framework for the comprehensive plan. But they also wanted to add more inclusive, more bold, more thoughtful, reach out to more members of the community, kind of spread that geography, and make sure that everybody's involved in the comprehensive plan. And so, that was a basic framework for the plan. In a nutshell, the community identified three priority areas that they felt should really be the focus. It wasn't going to be a laundry list of issues for the comprehensive plan, it was going to be kind of focused in three areas. Quality of place, making sure that the character of our communities, the character of our rural farmland areas, making sure that the character of the town, the city, Muncy, was preserved and enhanced. Housing conditions continue to improve for everybody within the county. That was a focus, conditions and opportunity. And the third one was upward mobility, to ensure that everybody has an opportunity to get the education, to get the training, to get the jobs that they want, to start to lay that framework for everybody. Those were the three values and priorities that were laid out for the plan. But we also recognize that there are some issues that we have to overcome as a community. We kind of got to get some basics right, kind of go back to the, kind of the basics of infrastructure, getting things kind of at a level where we can start to build to go to the next level. And so, the community recommended a get-the-basics-right approach. They felt that that wasn't too simple, they felt that that was actually a course correction. We're not necessarily there right now as a community, but that's where we want to aim, and that was the foundational structure. And so, by getting the basics right, what does that mean? I mean, it could mean everything in terms of quality of place, making sure that the potholes are fixed. In terms of housing, it could be making sure that housing is maintained, that if there's an opportunity to incentivize opportunities for that, we do that. That continues to increase the property values for the county and help the budgetary issues that all counties face. And the opportunity for this region to compete more aggressively with other counties within the state was also noted as an endeavor. As part of it, as part of the comprehensive plan, we also wanted to make sure that there was kind of a framework that gave Muncy, Muncy is on the left, Delaware County's on the right, that gave us some place typologies where we could start to focus dollars, where we could start to focus efforts and kind of build coalitions. For Muncy, you'll see that we have three different place typologies that could be focused on. One is downtown Muncy, the other is city neighborhoods, and the third is parks and corridors. Those were the priority areas, the place types for Muncy. For the county, it was focused on rural land, protecting the character, ensuring that that part of our economy continues to grow and expand, looking at main streets and corridors, specifically in the smaller communities throughout the county. And the third one was the neighborhoods. That one focused on housing, making sure that everybody has quality housing, that it's maintained, and that it's easily available and affordable. Within those general investment plans, there's some very specific timelines, layouts, partnership opportunities, who can help us achieve those goals, who can help us ensure that those goals are met over the next five to 10 to 15 years. Typically, a comprehensive plan is about a 10-year endeavor, but like any document, it's a living document, and it's something that we need to look at and kind of assess, maybe at year-end would be an ideal opportunity. As part of achieving the goals of the comprehensive plan, as well as the strategic investment plan priorities, there was a recommendation to direct energies for the county into these three areas. Balance development and land preservation, and ensure the farming heritage, look at new opportunities for economic agricultural opportunities, cultivate a network of strong main streets, and reinvest together for strong rural communities. This was the Delaware County focus area, and as part of this, we recognized as the framework, get the priorities, understand the priorities, the three that we outlined, quality of place, housing, and upward opportunities for everybody. Get the basics right, establish that foundation. We have the measurable outcomes that are outlined in the strategic investment plans, and then finally, work with the coalition. Because to do any of this work requires more than just the county, it requires more than just the city. It would require a coalition of partnerships, and that would include the philanthropy community, it would include the business community, certainly the government community, exploring opportunities with regard to some of the federal dollars and infrastructure investment opportunities that are arising. Putting all of that together is the structure that was outlined to move forward. That's basically it in a nutshell. If you have any questions, I'm certainly available to answer more specifics.
Well, thank you very much. I enjoy attending some of those public hearings, and Marta was always there, and we could ask questions, and we can turn the lights on now, please. And Marta, I noticed the committee on page 132. Do we have a few of those people here? I know Mr. Russell's here, and if there's anybody else, Mr. Bookout, I believe, is here. But we'd like to thank the volunteers for having these lengthy meetings, and attendance is so important.
Yes.
If the other Commissioners have any questions?
Yeah.
I make a motion we approve the resolution 2022-001.
I'll second it.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Henry.
Yes.
Mr. King.
Yes.
Ms. Reagan.
Yes. And Marta, it'll be on the webpage for a copy.
Yes, it will. And then, just for the public's information, the way this works, since the Plan Commission is a city-county agency, we will be also going in front of City Council next Monday night to have a resolution in front of them for approval by the City Council, and that will complete the process, and we'll then have our new comprehensive plan.
Thank you very much.
So, thank you very much, and I also would like to thank all of the people that were involved that helped us get to this point, and that's it.
And you can stick around for questions.
Sure.
Later, thank you.
Sure.
Okay.
Can I ask a question from the press real quick? Can we do an informal survey to see how many people out here are actually attending these meetings?
Just state your name. I don't think that's the time and place right now, sir, if you just would wait, please.
Anybody attend those planning meetings?
If you would sit down, please, and we have to go by the, we have to go by the agenda.
Okay.
Department heads.
Here it is.
Anybody want to tell us some good news? I received a report from the highway today, very impressive. 74 lane miles paved last year.
Did a good job last year.
Yeah. Now, if Mr. Humbert's here or not, he's very humble.
He's out in the hallway.
Is he out in the hallway? Okay, any other?
Please speak up.
Any other? Move down to the payments of claims of $1,419,444.50.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Mr. King.
Yes.
Mr. Henry.
Yes.
Ms. Reagan.
Yes. Now, it's time for the public. I believe there's a list of people that signed up.
Anyone out to get it? Anyone out to get it?
Okay, thank you. Three minutes are given to people to make a comment, and we'll start with Jason Cuchmay?
Cuchmay, yes.
Cuchmay?
Yes, thank you. So again, yeah, my name is?
James.
Take that right here. John has it.
Thank you.
All set? Okay. Yeah, my name is Jason Cuchmay, and I'm an attorney with the law firm of Snyder Morgan, Federoff &amp; Cuchmay in Fort Wayne, and I represent a group of local landowners that recently discovered that they soon may have an industrial solar farm in their backyards. They were surprised to learn this because they never received notice of any zoning approval or related proceedings. After some investigation, we did learn that the county's zoning ordinance was recently amended to allow for solar farms as a permitted use in the farming districts. My clients were unaware that that change was taking place, and they've got many concerns over the ordinance as it's currently drafted. As a result, they are requesting that the Commissioners impose a moratorium preventing the filing of solar farm applications to allow for further amendments to the zoning ordinance. Frankly, I think this is important, not only to protect the residents of Delaware County, but frankly, to protect the county itself. As you will soon going to learn, you know, once you get a solar company in town, next comes phase two, then comes another company, then comes another company, and so on. And the face of this county is going to change, and it's going to change for the long term, so it's very important to get it right. Now, I did pass out a binder before the meeting began, containing some information that I hope you will consider. You know, tab one contains some newspaper articles identifying other counties that did enact moratoriums to provide protection while their ordinances were changed. That was in Cozyosco County, Marshall County, and more recently, Madison County. Tab one also includes an ordinance from Henry County where they banned commercial solar farms altogether. You know, one big area of concerns with these large industrial solar farms is the effect on property values. Tab two contains an excerpt from a University of Texas study which found that large commercial solar farms have a negative impact on property values within three miles. And of course, the larger the project and the closer the project is, the more substantial the negative impact. Tab three contains an article referencing a study from the University of Rhode Island. That study examined more than 400,000 sales within one to three miles of 208 different solar installations. It was a comprehensive study, they were not cherry-picking data. That study also found a negative impact on property values in the treatment group, with the impact, again, being larger for homes that are closer. I've also been fighting a solar development in Plaski County, and the BZA in that county actually made a finding, saying there's no question that the development will negatively impact neighboring property owners. Which all this leads to my first request. Upon enacting a moratorium, we would like to see a property value guarantee put into the ordinance. I had a proceeding in another county where the BZA was deliberating imposing such a guarantee as a condition of approval. The solar company interrupted that deliberation and threatened a lawsuit if that was imposed. When one of the BZA members questioned why that would be an issue after the solar company spent all night arguing there would be no negative impact, I mean, the look on their faces and the stunned silence told us everything we needed to know. I mean, even the solar companies don't believe their own rhetoric. You know, tab four, in your binder, I've included some samples of property value guarantees from Plaski County, Cozyosco County, and Franklin County. And I'm not saying that each of those is drafted excellently or you need to follow it verbatim, but it's a concept that the county should consider in order to protect its residents. Tab five contains an analysis that was done by a Michigan State University professor in response to a solar project in Madison County, Indiana. That analysis concluded that there would be a direct loss of more than $1 million annually in agricultural sales, with other indirect and induced losses bringing the total to $2.3 million annually. I mean, over the life of that project, that figure is substantial. You've got less acres being farmed, you've got less fertilizer being purchased, less seed being purchased, I mean, there are real impacts. In Plaski County recently, one of the solar companies, one of their own experts, this is during their tax abatement proceeding, stated that the two solar projects would result in approximately 50 lost jobs, 50 lost jobs in the county. So again, it's very important to get it right. Every dollar spent on growing a crop returns $3 to the local economy. Decommissioning is also a very important issue. You cannot recycle all of the panels, and recycling panels is very cost prohibitive. Most landfills can't even accept the panels because they're considered toxic. There's millions of panels out there, with more to come, with solar continuing to expand and these panels beginning to reach the end of their useful life. and these panels beginning to reach the end of their useful life. There's an article at Tab 6 that makes reference to a 2016 estimate by the International Renewable Energy Agency that there was about 250 metric tons of solar panel waste in the world. And they estimate that number to be 78 million metric tons by 2050. The article also indicates that researchers with the Electric Power Research Institute undertook a study for U.S. solar owning utilities to plan for end-of-life, and they concluded that solar panel disposal in regular landfills is not recommended in case the modules break and toxic materials leach into the soil. And so disposal is potentially a major issue. When these concerns were raised in a hearing in Plaski County, and I'm not kidding you, the solar developer essentially said, "People are smart. You know, they'll figure something out in the next couple decades." That's not good enough, and we need to make sure the county is not left holding the bag down the end of the road. You know, the developer who gets the approval, they may not even be the owner when that project comes, when the end of that project comes. And we don't want these ending up in county landfills. Now, I do know you do have a decommissioning plan addressed to an extent in the existing ordinance, but I would submit it needs to be strengthened. I mean, one glaring issue is the cost for decommissioning. You know, your ordinance requires a surety for the estimated cost. You know, of course, the estimated costs in 2021 may very well not be sufficient to cover the actual cost 30 years down the road. You know, Cozyosco County, they require a surety for 150% of the cost estimate. And they require a new estimate to be provided.
President?
Yeah.
Actually, the time was more than three minutes because I had an error on the... So it's been about six minutes.
Okay. Is Reese Collins next?
Yeah, I was just here to finish what his statement was, if you guys wouldn't allow it to finish.
Okay. Carry on.
Okay, thank you.
Another three minutes, John?
Yes.
Okay. So, Cozyosco, as I was saying, they require a surety for 150% of the cost estimate, and they require a new estimate to be provided by an expert every five years for approval by the Plan Commission. Franklin County requires adjustments derived from the U.S. Bureau of Consumer Price Indexes to protect against inflation. And those examples, you'll find at Tab 7. Other counties also require developers to maintain a current general liability policy and naming the county as an additional insured with a dollar amount limits in the amount of $10 million minimum per occurrence. Others provide a hold harmless agreement to nonparticipating neighboring property owners to cover acts of negligence. Location. You know, Tabs 8 and 9 include a couple articles talking about how large solar farms stress the agricultural ecosystem and how solar farms are not a good use of agricultural land. So if you do impose a moratorium and reconsider the ordinance, we would ask that you reconsider the use of agricultural land and place these farms on nonproductive land instead. And if you do want to make agricultural land an option, we would ask that the ordinance be changed to allow that as a special exception instead of a permitted use. You know, people did not move out to the country to look at an industrial solar farm. You know, allowing solar farms as a special exception, frankly, it would allow more transparency. It allows for notice and an opportunity for those in the community to be heard at a public hearing on issues that impact them. It requires compliance with the comprehensive plan, new plan that you just approved here this morning. It is just simply better for everyone. You know, there are many other concerns with solar and with the existing ordinance. And I just really hope that this morning's conversation demonstrates at least the importance of considering a change to your existing ordinance. Since no applications, no solar applications have been filed under your existing ordinance, now would be the perfect time to impose a moratorium preventing the filing of applications to allow for a reconsideration of the county's solar ordinance, you know, with comment and public participation that I understand was lacking the initial time around. And so we would ask that the commissioners impose such a moratorium this morning. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
Good morning. I want to thank the commissioners for the opportunity to speak. My name is Kyle Mealy. I am superintendent of schools at Westell Community Schools. I also have two students at Westell Community Schools, so I'm also a parent. And although I'm just outside the district, I consider myself a community member with those in Gaston, since that is the community I serve. I'm here on behalf of the Board of Trustees with a few questions that we do have to raise to the commissioners. The first thing, my attendance today is due to the fact that the Board of Trustees did not receive proper notification and communication of exactly what this whole project entailed. We did receive one letter, I believe in October, that was addressed to my office. It did lack quite a bit of information that we're starting to gather now, and that's where our questions come from, because we know that there are always two sides of the story in trying to get the facts straight. Couple of our concerns include a tax abatement. A tax abatement for this amount of ground would have a considerable impact to the school corporation and to the district, and then in turn, to the community. If that amount of acreage did receive a tax abatement, the operations fund for the school district would take a direct hit. An operations fund would not allow, with a reduced operations fund, it would not allow us to have the programs we have for our students. With our vision and our mission being a small school with big opportunities, we'd be cutting into those big opportunities. Also, we would no longer be able to maintain, improve, and invest in the buildings and grounds at the level we are now. We do currently carry the lowest tax rate of any school district of the six county schools, which we're very proud of. At the same time, we're able to provide what I would consider some of the finest facilities and grounds in Delaware County in public education. If we reduce the operations fund, which is completely and solely provided from property tax dollars, many of our buildings and grounds would take a direct hit and would not be able to be improved. There in turn would cause us to have to look for a referendum, and that would mean that the other taxpayers outside the abatement would have to pick up that tax rate increase. And we don't think that's fair to our community. We do know they would step up and do so. As you can see, as we talked about, and I was very impressed with the strategic plan, there was a piece of that that said, "Strong rural community." I think it's very apparent that you have a strong rural community here today. The loss of property tax will cut programs for over 900 students. That's a lot of students. A lot of people would say, "Well, that didn't seem like a whole lot of students, a lot of students to us," from preschool through the 12th grade. A community growth is a concern of the school district. Community growth equals school growth, and they are hand in hand. Without a community growth, without the opportunity to increase community growth around Gaston and Westell Community Schools, we would then in turn feel an enrollment decrease. Enrollment is necessary. We receive nearly $7,000 per student for our education fund. If we lose enrollment at Westell Community Schools, we will lose dollars to the education fund. They're impacting Delaware County students. So the impact is not just on property tax dollars. The impact comes when students no longer, and families no longer, move into the community, and our population in school decreases. We would lose dollars to our education programs.
Madam President, that's three minutes.
May I ask for just a few more on behalf of the Board of Trustees?
One more.
Thank you.
What's that name? Somebody?
Your name, sir?
Wayne Vest.
Wayne Vest.
Wayne Vest.
I appreciate it, Wayne. Thank you.
I would like to add my three minutes to it.
We'll get to that. Finish your three minutes.
Enrollment has mirrored population in our district for the last 10 to 15 years. And because of that population, we've been able to maintain a steady population at the school. However, we have increased some enrollment due to the programs that we provide through the Education and Operations Fund. And that increase in transfers students of those transfer students that have transferred to another district, 10% have moved into the district since transferring. We think that is a plus for Gaston and for the community. Delaware County's future, I think Delaware County's future is strong schools and competition in public education. We have six county schools, and the State House would like to see that reduced. I don't think Delaware County wants to see that reduced. Competition is a good thing. We're wedged between Delta and Yorktown. And a loss in funding to the education fund and the operations fund would cause us not to be competitive. And I don't think anyone here wants one of the six schools to not be competitive. The competition in public education is a good one. We provide a specific education for our community that our community is proud of, holding on to traditions while also increasing innovation. We would hate to see any of that impacted at Westell Community Schools. We've seen tremendous growth in the last five years. We've seen tremendous improvement in our facilities and buildings and grounds, and we would hate to see any of that impacted. And this project specifically concerns us with the future of not only our community schools, but the future of our rural community that is so strong in tradition, but also is so sure to back innovation when needed and necessary. I appreciate your understanding today, and I would love the opportunity to speak to each one of you individually. Thank you for your time. Thank you, gentlemen, for your time. Thank you.
Pardon? Can you speak up?
Yeah.
Say the name again, louder.
She's there.
Oh, she's there.
My name is Catherine Kirkley. I'm also speaking for my husband, Jerry Kirkley, whose family has farmed in Washington Township for seven generations. A fact that you, as commissioners, are elected by us voters. A fact is that you are paid by us, the same voters. A fact should be that you are looking out for and protecting our best interests. You will never be able to please everyone, but the majority should have a chance to speak. You, as commissioners, have had two years to work on this project. We are just now being aware of this. We've been denied notification and changes, and would like to voice our opinion. Several decisive, deceiving actions have taken place, though, that we have questionable. Our legal representation today requested to be put on today's agenda, and we were denied. I would like a reason for that. It very clearly states that if you notify to be put on the agenda by noon the Thursday before a meeting, that is the process, and he did that. So I'm questioning why that was a denial. He had a lot to say. There's a lot more he could explain to you, and that was not on the agenda today.
I don't remember getting that request. I don't know if the other commissioners...
Was it Wednesday?
That request was made.
The council member said no. The attorney for the county said no. That the council...
The request was made. I checked with the president at the time. He indicated that it would be at the time of the public input.
We give everybody three minutes.
Yep.
Okay. Thank you.
That's different than being on the agenda. We're questioning how 3,000 acres, 3,000 acres of our extremely productive farmland was presented to our county council by Mr. Brad Bookout, and that it should be declared an economic revitalization area? That is defined as land that is undesirable, impossible of normal development, deterioration of improvements, et cetera. This fall, there's a lot of these farmers that had 250 to 300 bushel and acre yield. That's not unproductive. That's not deteriorating. That's well to note. Did Mr. Bookout have proof of this deterioration? I think that is required when you have to rezone something into the ERA. I watched the video of the meeting. There was no proof. It seems like this was a deliberate action that was purely to clear the path for Invenergy's takeover of our community. We feel the bullying by Invenergy needs to stop. And yes, it has been happening by them harassing our elderly farm owners that continue to get phone calls and uninvited visits by signed-on farmers, sometimes accompanied by lawyers. And this has been happening. They're feeling pressured and confused. It is a fact that our landowners, that there are landowners that have signed on with Invenergy for this project, that are having very serious regrets.
Madam President, that's three minutes.
Would somebody else like to...
Like to hear my three minutes?
What's your name?
Eric Landis.
Thank you. Carry on.
Invenergy's website claims that it is a company that is community-friendly. So we will be looking for that. Those of us here today are representing literally hundreds of people in Washington Township. They are dedicated farmers with kids and grandkids that want to carry on the tradition. They are country-loving families that have chosen a safe place to raise their kids and pets. They are retired factory workers who choose to enjoy taking life easy, enjoying the view from their porches. And us housewives, loving the wonderful kitchen window view and seeing deer, birds, and our tractors working out in the fields. We love to watch our sunsets on the horizon, but we will no longer even see the horizon. There'll be 20-foot-tall solar panels, plus the glare off the sunlight. Delaware County Commissioners, please step back, take a pause to really study and research this huge decision you are about to make. We are not against solar energy by any means. Climate change is real, and we have to find the best solutions for energy. But consider putting industrial solar panels in an area such as underused city areas, on large building rooftops, and deserted industrial sites. There's plenty of those. Mr. Bookout seems to be very good at redevelopment in our county. I commend him. So imagine if Muncie, the Muncie area, could become a role model for the state and responsibly start implementing new solar energy. That is all I have to say. Thank you for your time.
This is my son. He's the fifth generation of our farm. I just wanted to speak on their behalf, on Joe Evans' side. It's a few years older than him. For Reese Collins back there, you're taking their opportunity to farm away. Because you can't guarantee, as I talked to a lot of the people yesterday that was for it, that were setting their ground up, they can't guarantee me that this thing isn't going to go from 3,000 to 10,000 or whoever. Like I said last time, there could be companies, big companies, coming in, buying up ground just to put them in solar panels. And you're taking away from their opportunity. There's very few farmers, the way it is anyway, and you're taking away their opportunity to come in here and be able to do that for a living. I also wanted to speak for the people that have houses that's going to be surrounded by it. Mr. Henry, last time you, yesterday, last meeting, you said that you would be for it if you had a house that you were getting that kind of money for it. What I wanted to ask you was, what if you didn't get any money for it? What if you had your house surrounded that you worked your entire life for, entire life for, all of a sudden have to put solar panels up around you had no say? And that's what a lot of people here are. They don't, they felt like they never had a say in it, because everything was done under the table. Everything was just pushed through. No letters were sent. No letters were sent out. Wouldn't you think that it would have been nice for at least some of these landowners to be able to at least have a say in it? Would you really consider that? Would you really still want to live in this area where you, where you don't have, you don't have no say in it, and you, and all of a sudden you've got solar panels around your house, and you're getting no money for it? Property values will go down. They will lose money, and there's nothing there to protect them. Like somebody else said, you guys are elected more or less to protect us, and the way we feel like that we're not protected at all. Said, I prayed, I prayed a lot over the last few, since our last meeting. And when are we going to actually open up and look at somebody's, look at them instead of seeing the dollar signs in front of us? When are we going to actually open up and look at and see actually people out here? That's what, that's my main thing. Everything with government is all going to look straight for, look at the dollar signs, but nobody cares about people's feelings anymore. They just want whatever, whatever they can make them the most money. That hurts. Thank you.
That was my brother-in-law that just spoke. My name's Jason White. I'm a farmer, a seed dealer, have a seed treating business, also a board member of Indiana Farm Bureau. Our family farm was established in 1795. It put my nephew in a position, looking for income to support his family. There will be no 12th generation in the Richards family farm. We have 600 acres that will be surrounded by the solar panels that we farm now, just north of Gaston. I understand the need for new energy. I worked as a subcontractor installing and repairing Duke Energy substations for eight It makes no difference where these, it makes no difference where these solar farms go in regards to location for feeding the grid. There's only three grids in the United States. When you take farm ground for this, when you take farm ground for small, when you take farm ground for this, you rip small communities apart. The ordinance you have agreed to aren't even close to the neighboring counties. You need to look at property guarantees. Why these people don't farm? I'm a farmer. Yes, it affects me big time, but these people didn't move, just have to look at solar panels. We enjoy the views. I'm going to lose revenue from seed sales to seed treating. We'll be competing against people that get high dollar for cash rent just for solar panels. As a farmer, we can't compete at all. We all make mistakes. It just depends on what's inside us to know what's right and wrong. This is your second chance to get the ordinance right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Sorry about that.
I want to start off by letting you hear what it sounds like. This is what you're going to hear. 24/7. You want that out your back door? My concern with solar farms is their location. Don't allow them to be built on prime farm ground. Have you heard the term "breadbasket of the world"? You're sitting in the middle of it. Has it occurred to you the impact this will have on our food supply? My neighbors are not thinking clearly, and certainly not thinking of those around them. They are not even thinking about what will happen to themselves. They could lose their ground through eminent domain. Solar company sells to the panels to the utility company, they turn around and take the ground right out from under them. Hello? Anybody home? Taking our tillable acreage to build solar farms is the most destructive option I have ever heard of. Not one of you have done your research. What's the plan if these panels catch fire? The plan is to just let them burn themselves out because you can't put them out. More intelligent thing to do is the city of Muncie and others like it should clean up their blighted areas, build solar panels there, and the city can use the power created instead of it being hooked up to the grid and sent to who knows where. Build them beside distribution centers, et cetera. Those who have made this bad choice with their land should consider other options such as growing hemp. Hemp can be used in many ways, has many uses, and it's not going to poison us. They should consider making investments into building a hemp processing plant. They want money in their pockets, then hemp is the way to go. If these solar farms are built and my property value goes down, and it will, I will file suit. I will regularly check my water supply, and the day I find it tainted, I will file suit. My final words. Might as well put your fork down because there's no food on your plate. Thank you.
Harold King.
My wife and I own property in Washington Township. You know, during this whole process, I go back through the minutes and all this and some write-ups. Everyone's really proud that there was no opposition. Reason there's no opposition is that most people don't take a Muncie paper. I was at a meeting last week, took three days on Facebook to get 100 of us informed. So that is a lot of people out there that are concerned. In May 20, May 3, you pass an ordinance basically allowing solar farms. You know, the research I've seen by Dr. Stephen Miller in Madison County, which is only 2,000 acres, the net loss of tax revenue is significant. And with 3,000, it's going to be more, and the rest of us are going to pay for that. You know, I saw the comprehensive plan. It talked about growing the tax base. You are limiting your tax base and going to decrease it with these solar farms. I would like for you to consider the fact that this has been done. I have no doubt it was all legal and followed procedure. You have a good lawyer. But you have a chance to do what's right, and when you look at all the evidence, I think it's not a good deal for anyone. My question to you, will you read the information and consider a moratorium? That's a question. Mr. King, would you read the information, consider a moratorium? Yes or no?
I'm going to read the information, absolutely.
Okay. Ms. Riggins?
Yes, I would consider.
Okay. There's another one, too. I hope you do, because when you look at all the facts, this is not a good deal for anyone. Thank you.
Don Morris?
He left. He left.
He left.
He'll believe President.
Okay. Mike Kelly.
My name is Mike Kelly, and I have lived at my present property about 20 years. And I have put about every bit of my invest money into my property. My property will be surrounded by, I have four acres on Jonesboro Road. I was never told anything about this until somebody stopped two days ago and told me about this. I read the Muncie Star. I get it online, but I do not look at little advertisements or whatever in the legal section for this to be missed. A few years ago, down from me, people by the name of Davis build a house. I received all kind of notification about, do you want this? Do you want to come to a meeting? And do you have a problem with this? I never received a thing about this. This is absolutely ridiculous to go to something like this, to take good farmland and turn it into something because a couple guys want to retire, or some want to retire from farming. I've lived there 20 years, and the one guy has never spoken to me one time about anything. They have no regard for the land. They have no regard for anything other than making money. They drive up on my property, make big ruts in the ground. If I were to go down in their yards and do donuts, which I feel like doing, I'd be arrested. They never say, hey, I'm sorry, the tractor or these big treads went in, nothing. And that's the way this is going to be for all of us. They're going to throw this in, and you walk away from it, and we'll be the ones to deal with it. Like a lot of us in this room, I will never recover. I will, nobody would want to buy my property that I can remember sitting out, and I'd like to look at the beans, soybeans growing, and as they grew, it would almost be like an ocean, just watching them. And now, what am I going to look at? I'm going to look at nothing but solar panels completely around me. And my prop, it would be, but that's not the important thing for me, to say something, but it's for all of these people that have worked their lives into this land and be losing it. I made some certain questions here, and I want to make sure I don't miss anything. I think the biggest thing is, when you look at this, you take all of this property out of the tax rolls. We're all going to make up for this, all of us. You know, and all of these things went on. My taxes went up a great deal. And I looked at some, and some that are involved in this, their taxes went down. This last year, an assessment, I looked them up, and I thought, well, I'm going to, and then I looked at, I thought, I'm not going to say a lot. It's probably not going to be that much, but I wondered that. I wonder how their assessments and everything went down, and mine went up about 22%. But this is the thing that we're all going to be dealing with, of this thing of progress, and you don't even know if it's going to work.
Madam President, that's three minutes.
Thank you.
That's all?
That's, Mr. Kelly was the last one.
Can I have the sheet, please?
Yes.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to send the solar energy ordinance back to the planning commission. And I would like, on page three, in the section three, the maintenance plan, any damaged panels which release any substance, and I don't know how you want to say this. John, you may have to help with this. Any damaged panel that releases any kind of substance, the county plant commission and the board of health shall be notified. Also, there should be a mitigation plan submitted to the county and the health board with possible testing to nearby wells. On section C, setbacks, number two, there's a minimum of 50-foot setback, which includes the screen buffer, whatever. I want to switch that to 100-feet setback from the adjacent property owners. And in section F of the fencing, there needs to be a, a section or something that speaks about large game and wooded areas. Right now, we allow for 10% of the fence to be distributed along each section for small and medium wildlife. We need to have something in the ordinance for the large, the large game, preferably deer. And I would put that form of a motion to be sent back to the planning commission.
I'll second it.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Anright.
Yes.
Mr. Kane.
Yes.
Ms. Riggins.
Yes.
I think Marta has.
Yes, Marta.
Yeah, I just wanted to note that in order to, for the planning commission to start the process to consider an amendment, we would have to have public notice, which means that that would not be able to occur until the February, planning commission meeting, the first Thursday in February, and I don't know that date off the top of my head, but, and then it would come back to the commissioners at their second February meeting, and.
What date is that?
February 3 is the first Thursday in, in February.
Okay, so that would be the planning commission meeting, and then the, typically, we forward it to the commissioners for their second meeting of the month.
Which would be on February 22.
Is that President's Day?
President's Day is the 21st, so the meeting is on the 22nd.
Down to the 22nd.
Okay. Okay. The other thing that I think could be very relevant is that I may be receiving an application from Invenergy yet this month.
I would move that we go ahead and place a, you know, do a moratorium until that date in February then. That would allow us to get these corrections in before any application is received.
Yeah.
I would think that'd be appropriate. Mr. Brook, you agree?
Yes, you can make that motion as a resolution. I can formalize that, but that would go into effect immediately.
Immediately. I'll go ahead and make that motion to the meeting, our next meeting, which would be, or the next meeting we could.
January 18.
We need to change that to the 25th of January.
Well, I think, I think this meeting will be February what, John?
For the second meeting, it will be February 22.
So the moratorium would be, I'll make that motion to be in effect until the 22nd, when we can get these additions corrected.
Yeah, and effective immediately.
Correct.
I'll second it.
Roll call.
Mr. Kane.
Yes.
Mr. Henry.
Yes.
Ms. Riggins.
Yes.
February 22.
For everybody in here, Marta, can you give them the time and the dates of the planning commission meeting?
Yes, yes.
Because that's where they would want to.
The planning commission meeting, it begins at 6:00 PM, and that is in this room. And the, as you know, county commissioners' meetings begin at 9 o'clock, and they are also in this room. So on February 3, there would be the public hearing for consideration of proposed amendments to the zoning ordinance regarding the solar farm provisions, and we will start working on those right away and try to keep things posted on our website, you know, regularly as we, we come up with proposals so that as you go into the February 3 meeting, you're, you know, aware of what's on the table.
Would you, Marta, would you like to move that location maybe for that planning commission? Would you, Marta, would you like to move the location maybe for that planning commission meeting? Maybe out to the Justice Center in Tulsa? I just thought.
Oh, actually, I've not been out there to see what kind of a room there is.
It's an auditorium.
I'll go out there and look. How's the, how's the audio?
Very good.
And recording is good?
We'll consider that.
Okay.
We'll consider that.
Yeah, thanks, Sherri. That would be good. I don't know if there's a gentleman that has his hand up.
Also, Madam President, the meeting on...
Tuesday the 18th.
January the 18th.
January 18th, yes. We need to move to...
25th, I believe it is.
24th.
Fourth.
Yeah, January, January 24th.
24th?
Yes.
I'm open.
Okay. I make a motion, we move the next commissioners' meeting from the 18th to the 24th.
I'll second that.
I don't think that's a problem with anything we have. Roll call.
Mr. Henry?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Ms. Riggins?
Yes. Next meeting, January 24th. Thank you, Marta.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. I believe there's a man back there.
One question. My name's Todd.
State your name, please.
My name's Todd Smackins. I'm a resident and journalist here in Muncie. The moratorium is on the, on what exactly? On what you've approved for the solar?
The moratorium, as I understand the motion, is to, a moratorium on accepting any applications for solar farms.
Okay. How does that impact the resolution that you guys just approved for that together DM, strategic plan? Because it involves...
Doesn't have anything to do with that, sir.
But it involves solar.
Doesn't have anything to do with that.
Doesn't have anything to do with it.
It doesn't have anything to do with that?
No, sir.
So the strategic plan in Delaware County is what for solar?
There's going to be a copy of the strategic plan put on the website here. You can check it out then.
Do you know what it is? You want to tell other people what it is while they're here?
Sir, it's in the book. Everyone can get on a look if it has anything to do with solar. Marta, you...
That's why, that's why I ask, how many of these people attended those meetings? This plan was put together, and apparently, they weren't included.
Well, sir, those meetings were, those meetings were all published like everything else.
So you're not going to, you're not going to check, check on that and see if maybe you want to revise that plan?
No, sir.
Okay.
We had a committee put it together and...
Yeah, I brought it. I know what's in it.
You want to go to the microphone?
Let's adjourn this before it gets out of hand.
Yeah.
Yeah, because if we don't do something, they're just going to keep coming up.
Harold King again, and thank you for your patience. Mr. Henry, the motion on the, the distance on the set aside, 50 feet to 100 feet, I read that very closely. That's not very much space between that solar panel and my house or my property. Is there any way to make that larger? Some around different places have...
Grant County. Have reference Grant County.
Yeah. Well, Grant, Grant County, where I also have property, I know they, they have a much larger area. So that would be for you to consider.
Thank you. Okay. With your pleasure.
Make a motion recess.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Henry?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Ms. Riggins?